There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to Thursday, December 14, 2023, to the Citroplating Board meeting held in a select board hearing room at Town Hall. On the town hall, I have a meeting which we have to know by now. We have a post your agenda is there as second?
Seven.
Seven by inverted on favor.
Aight.
Six here to be able to continue a cover here in major site review at Storm One permit Sterns Meadow one frequent plan four five three chief justice pushing highway assesses map along Y forty seven dash two dash twenty six dash J and the African product since your good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Very well. Thank you again for having us. My name is Steve Robins. I'm manager of the current with me is Wade Stanley, one of our engineers of the project. I am going to share a short presentation. If I can find the way to do that correctly. There we go. Good. We'll run again as a public hearing through some of the project background and project objectives and then run through a site overview and response to comments from our November hearing. Just some minor tweaks in response to board and public comments I wanted to share with you all. As a matter of background, the new water treatment plant is a project identified from a water system master plan in 2021. Town Citroplating Water Department serves approximately nineteen thousand people here in town. It produces the existing plant an average of about one and a half million gallons per day. And the existing treatment plant is unable to effectively manage the angines levels from the Old Oak and Bucket Pond as well as had some issues with disinfection by products from its process. The design and construction of the new water treatment plant at the Sterns Meadow site was approved at the September 2022 special town meeting and we were in current on behalf of the town commence design on the project at that point. The project objectives, the Old Oak and Bucket Pond has a permitted average withdrawal of about point eight million gallons per day. The new water treatment plant is designed for the peak withdrawal of three million gallons per day. And the process is designed to meet EPA and MasDPP water quality standards. For resiliency and operability, we've designed the plant hydrologically to be able to produce that three million gallons of design capacity over two shifts in sixteen hours as opposed to a twenty four hour period. The building itself is about thirty five thousand square feet. It has three core components, the treatment process area, operations functions, offices and support areas, and a five bay garage for equipment storage. The building height did require a ZBA special permit. This is the site layout. There are no changes to the site layout from what the board and the public have seen before. Our major constraints on the site are retinons on the lower portion of the site. The scenic corridor along Route three A, the setback we need to maintain there via butters to the rear and the space needed for general valve facility. As this board is well aware, we made our initial submittal to the board in August and this is the fourth public hearing. And we appreciate the board and the public comments that resulted in some changes to the project a few hours. One area of modification or update, I guess rather on the septic system. Citroport Health has no further comments on our submittal. Their approval is pending planning board approvals of that process until this process is closed is a hold. The septic system receives sanitary waste from the facility. It does not receive any processed water. Waste water from the laboratory, emergency showers and eye washes are directed to a holding tank which could then be pumped out at. We have a lot of discussion about construction based stormwater and de-watering. And I wanted to update the board on a few things in that regard. For stormwater, we do have perimeter controls, silt fence, diversion ditches, stabilization, sediment storage on the site during construction to manage stormwater. We have a thirty three thousand cubic foot sediment basin for that surface water runoff during construction. We have a separate basin about eighteen thousand cubic feet, which is essentially a settling basin or utilization basin for groundwater from de-water operations. Water would flow out of that you settling basin to a fifty foot level spreader on the southern, kind of the central southern part of the site. A de-watering sub detail has been added with some additional information to the board to show what is anticipated for de-watering during construction. This is, I'm gonna get up and then go to the screen for this figure, just getting some of the line work.
Yeah, you all have paper copies too on your.
This is a cross section through the building. There's a couple of lines here. The two that I want to point out are this top blue line. It runs and down, comes out down here and this lower blue dashed line. Kind of in this, this area where my pen is on the screen. And on the other side of the building, it's, it's the same. It's just the reflected, you know, one, this is the rear of the building. This is the front of the building, west side, east side. What this bottom line represents is the groundwater elevation observed when we did forings last August. With the exception of this corner of the excavation, the rest of our excavation and footing is above that groundwater observed in August. The top line, we think is, is conservatively the high water groundwater level based on deep hole tests conducted on site and where we observed modeling in the soils. It doesn't mean that groundwater is always there. It just means that it has been there in portions of the site. And so the, our deepest area of excavation relative to that is again in this area. Again, from, from here down, our work is essentially above that seasonal high groundwater from the lower portion of the building.
That with that information, we reviewed the de-watering needs for the project with our geotechnical engineer. And they provided information that we provided to the board in terms of what potential re-watering operation looked like. And this is a series of deep watering sums within the excavation. These are stone pits with a perforated plastic pipe in them. They pump put in the middle of that hangar and pumping water out comes excavation when there is water to do. And because a lot of our excavation is above both high ground water and certainly what's probably a low ground water condition. We don't anticipate that to be full time during construction, but it will be, could be periodically. And based on the soil characteristics, the geotechnical engineer estimated that de-watering flow to be under about ten gallons per.
So before you leave that.
Please.
This is the construction activity. What's the prominent de-watering look like?
There are foundation drains along the perimeter of the foundation. And again.
Can you explain how that works because it wasn't readily.
Sure. Foundation drain at or around the location of the footer. It's a perforated plastic pipes run by stone. It's there to prevent, you know, significant hydrostatic pressure against the foundation during periods of high groundwater. Those are opposed to daylight on, on the site. They're not part of the stormwater system. And they're there to just alleviate excessive groundwater against the foundations when, when appropriate.
Yes, I sent this note over. It didn't get a response. I was hoping you'd respond to it. There were three groundwater sort of outlet points on this drawing. One of which looks like it's higher, the apple is higher than the inlet. And one of which looks like it's under the foundation of the building somewhere. Can you explain that? Can you get a drawing here and sort of explain how that works?
No. But that's the thing that we're all.
Yeah.
Um, so your first point was that this foundation drain goes under the building, right? So not to go back to the other slide, but this is where our deep tanks are. Is in this area. So that's why this needs to be here. It needs to be under those tanks because this portion of the building is actually going to be deeper than this portion. That's why you need a foundation drain here.
No, I get that. I'm just trying to understand how you designed this. It looks like there's, there's a high point in the middle.
There's a high point in the middle. You're absolutely right. So this one comes out and goes this way. Whereas this one goes out and comes around the building and goes that way. So.
And from the manhole.
Yep.
To the outlet point.
Yep.
The outlet point was that it's higher than. How does that work?
I mean, I don't have elevations in front of me.
Invert elevations, the outlet elevation is seven two point four to the manhole. And the outlet invert at the outlet is seventy seven. So I'm trying to figure out how that, are you gonna get the water to flow?
I mean, that's an oversight then that we didn't catch, but the last time I looked at it, this was a slightly a drop manhole for one of the pipes coming in and then out.
It's like two pipes.
Yeah, two pipes are going in. One's coming in significantly higher than the other one. So I'd have to, again, I, I don't have the inverts in front of me, but uh, if that's something we need to adjust, what will happen is that will just come down a little bit. And maybe this would come out over here, like where the other one's coming out, but.
Where did, where did, where would it come out if it had to be like seventy one or seventeen?
Uh, what's gonna happen this?
Much closer to the boundary line.
Yeah, I mean, we'd probably come down, down here to this swale, which is where it's all going anyway.
Okay, I thought I was missing something, but it's just.
That invert may not be correct. That's only one season.
Well, that seems to look.
Don't think they invert on that manhole.
There's two inverts. There's a seven, two and a half, seventy four.
We'll check that. That's.
And then if you will go around to the, that's the south end of the building, I guess, right? Yeah, there's something called discharge outlet number three. What is that? Underdrain outlet number three.
Where do you, can you point me to it? Is it this?
No, it's on the, it's at the foundation on, on the south end. Yeah, right there.
This line?
No, it's the bottom quadrant of that line.
Right here?
Yep.
That's the vestibule that's over the garage.
If you go to the deep end of the garage, it says underdrain outlet number three with ripper act. It's uh.
We'll, we'll check on that.
I'm just trying to understand how this stuff works. This is not intended to be off that all.
Yep.
That's not definitely correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's probably gonna be about where you end up discharging these both fun.
What detail sheet was the detail you were referring to on?
Or else.
Send this over. Help me with this project.
I didn't hear anything. So I mean, I tried, I tried to discuss this with EPW today. Yeah, I only saw two outlets for underdrains as you, as you only found two outlets for underdrains.
Yes, they have labeled this third drain. It was, it wasn't clear to me what that was. And just in terms of the water level, the heat, the groundwater level that you put, particularly the high groundwater level. So the expectation would be at times it will be at high groundwater. It's not gonna be one day. It'll be multiple weeks, et cetera. These, these other, under foundation drains that will be running all the time.
Yes.
Hundred percent of the time. So we'll be discharging at those two locations over land a hundred percent of the time.
During most high ground water.
Right, which could be, could be seasonal. Yeah, it could be fall spring, right? Like a running book, placey book.
Again, the, the de-watering flows at that state of state, according to our geotechnical engineer, on the order of ten gallons.
Yeah, no, I did, but it's gonna be ten gallons a minute.
Continues.
Continuously. And it's sort of feeding down towards the property line, but it will, I guess I want to make sure it's not feeding on to other people's property and all of that. And you're not gonna end up with swamp down at that property.
It's, it's feeding in the natural direction of groundwater flow and to those gardens on the lower portion of the site. And ultimately to, to the reservoir.
Okay. Did you address that one discharge point that if the elevations are right, you're gonna have to move it downhill?
Within, I know that our grading and limited disturbance have significant area down below that call.
So it's. Yeah, I just want to know where it's.
So seventy seven, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but seventy seven is the correct outlet. I just had somebody checking on the back end. Uh, the manual just had a bad value in it. So that's not correct.
So what is the manual?
It, so the, the out, the underdrain at the building is up around eighty one I believe is what I just got. Eighty one point one. So it will be seventy seven at the outlet. I have to do, I think it's a two percent slope um, to get there. So I, again, I can't do that off the top of my head. But uh, to answer your question, is it gonna be seventy seven?
The location shown manhole inverts.
Manual inverts are just bad. We just need to update those.
So it's the manhole rim, right?
That's correct.
Seventy eight and a half.
Seventy eight and a half.
You got a foot and a half from the rim?
Yeah.
To get to this.
No, that one's off too. It should be eighty two and a half. Okay, I'm looking at it now.
All right. I think we.
So that will get updated.
I think I get updated.
Drawn. The drawn and we. To show the correct, I mean, it's drawn correctly. It's just not called that correctly. And the two leaders you were making reference to down on the southern end, let's say proposed underdrain outlet number three. Those must have been copied over and not supposed to be in this drawing. There is no outlet in that location. There is no outlet. Or, or underdrains. So that will also get corrected.
Anything else on that before we move on? Uh, we discussed landing controls at our last meeting. The, reviewed the landing spec with our electrical engineer. The controls on those will allow for dealing below fifty percent. Uh, and we discussed at last meeting, uh, trial and some different values after construction to find the right, right sector. Fifty percent is what's in the energy conservation code. And we can tweak a little bit if site conditions allow and if it's appropriate for security of the site. And that's, that's during evening and non-optimized operational periods. Uh, we had some revisions of the landscape plan that I will, I will show. We added some additional trees in key locations. We modified the size of some of the trees to have greater diversity of tree sizes. Um, we have some additional understory plantings in the southwest corner and the northeast corner to provide a more holistic visual screen, not just a row of, you know, trees. And we provide a final tree survey to the town. Um, here is that, that updated, updated landscape plan as a whole. Um, there are also some modifications out of the work around three A to make sure we have the sightlines. I'm gonna zoom in on two locations here. The southwest corner. Where we are closest to nearby properties. And what we've done along the slope uh, is, is pulled in a diversity of species, including a lot of evergreens and understory plantings running up that slope to provide that movement edge feature. And similarly on the northern end of the site, from one of the earlier comments, we were able to revise our grading and move our limited disturbing factors of the site quite a bit to where it was previously. Uh, and we have a bill of uh, fines along this corner as well, where we are a year, some of the chase times.
I had asked for more extensive landscaping at the two heads to help protect the others.
Those are the changes that we have on the project from our last meeting.
I, I think that, you know, the revised plans have been submitted. You've all seen a draft decision. I think we're at the point of having, going through the draft decision. We may need to add another condition as the ending condition tonight that our revised set of plans shall be submitted prior to a building permit to show correct rims, inverts, outlets for underdrains, revised when we're worked with who wetlands mitigation area. So I, you know, and if we go through this, if we have to add anything else to this, we will get up, we'll, we'll do that. But I think we're ready for the, you know, for the condition, for the binding factor conditions.
Can I ask one more question? Just a while thinking. So we're gonna have periods of time where these foundations are gonna be basically submerged. And is, there's still no, there's no drainage from the interior of the building that goes anywhere except to the tight end.
And the second system.
Well, that's sanitary, right?
Yes, right.
So that's, that's not gonna be giving drinks.
Correct. There are no, there are no floor drains.
There are no floor drains. So you're confident you can keep all this water out there?
Right.
We'd like to remind everybody, this is like the fifty year plan. This is our ticket. So we're a lot dead group. But we're discussing probably as we go through it because there's lots of red, blue and black ink. So. Do you have any comments from the board? Back up.
Comment any questions, please comment. Just give it a bit more.
Any information about fence spec?
Yep, um, it is specified to be a black vinyl coated fence. Um, we discussed with EPW's privacy slots and those are not included in the project.
It's not included?
Not.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, go, go nice and slow. Oh, is there anybody on the line? Excuse me.
I made a public.
Public comment in front of your room. About TV land, please raise your hand and we'll let you.
I don't see anyone.
We don't see anyone. Okay, yeah, you can step, okay? I note to the following funds of that. One, the town Citroplating. Submitted on August tenth, twenty twenty three, and newly filed in town court. On the same day, an application for site plan review package with backup data and plan contained town Citroplating mass. Four fifty three Chief Justice Pushing Highway Stern Meadows drinking water treatment plant. Site plan approved by the Pagan August town on twenty three by Woodward and Cowan. Six to like twenty eight plan sheets, architectural plans prepared for Woodward, Woodward and Cowan by Harriman dated eight, eight two twenty three. Consisting of exterior elevations, overall 3D mass and views and finishes board and architectural narrative by Harriman dated July twelfth, twenty twenty three. Response to the board, questions and third peer review dated December one, twenty twenty three. Landscape plan by Calverson dated August twenty twenty three with revisions twelve, eleven, twenty twenty three. Two, Article three of the April eighth, twenty nineteen annual town meeting authorized four million dollars by Equidatus vote design and engineering of a new water treatment plant. Article twenty of April twelfth, twenty twenty one, annual town meeting authorized the land acquisition of parcels known as forty seven dash two dash twenty six A through forty seven dash two dash two six J for one million three hundred fifty thousand dollars by the player Equidatus vote. Article five of the April eleventh, twenty twenty two special town meeting authorized fifty million dollars for a new water treatment plant with a declared two thirds vote. Site to be approved at a special town meeting and approved by the residents. Article one of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty two special town meeting authorized the signing of the water treatment plant by where the yard vote. The town supported the funding and signing of the project as evidenced in the notes above. Three, the site consists of a total area of fifteen point five seven acres or six hundred seventy eight thousand four hundred two square feet with forty nine, fourteen point nine five square feet of upland and is located on Chief Justice Pushing Highway uphill of Tac Factory Pond. The site is located in the residence R one showing district as well as in the water resource protection district. And the south end of the site is the, is in the flood plain and watershed watershed protection district. The front portion of the site is in the wireless communication overlay district. Property is undeveloped upland, woodland, upland woodlands. A utility building and water supply uses our by right uses in the R one self district. Four, according to memorandum. Four, according to memorandum dated September twelve, twenty point three. From Witter and Cowan, the average height of the facility meets requirements to the average height of all the facility. Is thirty four feet. Four. I think that was the issue. And is no more than thirty five feet in the R one zone. The maximum height of the proposed facility is forty five feet, one inch, which exceeds the maximum height of the required requirement of four feet. This maximum height is required for the water treatment process area. Relief of the exceedance has been sought and granted from the Zone of Portals for the height requirement. Five, the design of the subject system design has been approved by the Board of Call. Six, section seven seventy point six, a site plan approval standard A. Protection of the adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive methods of utilizing the site. Finally, the property off of Chief Justice Pushing Highway has single family residence to the west of the site. A residence to the north, the road and residence beyond it to the east. And a residence and tap factory pond beyond the property to the south. The proposed water treatment plant will be located to the north central part of the property. The full access drive. Entry drive comes in to the site from Chief Justice Pushing Highway. And goes around the building to come out at an egress, although. The entry drive is two way access providing access to the public visitor parking. And the private access to delivery and fire access around the building. There is a proposed landscape screen in the rear building providing screen to the residents. Residences to the west and it continues to the north, providing screen to the north residents. The applicant assigns the proposed use as accountable for other uses in the area as it is uphill from Tapback Repond. Portion of the public water supply. The Board assigns that the adjoining premises will be protected as conditioned against any detrimental or offensive uses of the site. And the site plan meets standards of review of Citrix Zone Bylaw, section seven seventy point six, paragraph A. Seven, section seven seventy point six B, site plan approval standard B. The traffic safety and ease of access at street and highway entrances and exits of driveways. Taking account of traffic volume, grades, side distances, and distances between such driveway entrances. Exits and the near existing street or highway interceptions at times of peak traffic flow. Finally, the applicant engaged Chappelle Engineering Associates LLC, Chappelle. To prepare a traffic assessment for the situating drinking water treatment plant. The Board, through its engineering peer review consultant, Horst Lee Wittenbroe, found the assessment noted that both driveways. Need or exceed the minimum site distance and safe operations can be expected. The assessment notes that the proposed traffic increase on Chief Justice Pushing Highway are considered minimal and within safe fluctuations of traffic. The Board determines that the proposed project provides traffic safety and eases and eases of access. At the street and access driveways, occurred through identified sideline. And recommendations offered by the applicant and the town's consulting engineer. And will not create any undue congestion in the streets and waves of running of the proposed project. Or on the road with irrelevant proximity. To the proposed project. Eight, section seven seventy point six C, site plan approval standard C. Safety and adequacy of driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking and loading sites. Minimizing layers of headlights and light intrusion. Sufficiency of access service vehicles such as electricity, gas, fuel, telephone, laundry, rubbish removal. Water steward, fire, police, ambulance, other routine or emergency vehicles. Finally, the number of parking spaces for a water treatment plant not specifically followed up in the table of minimum requirements. Under seven of the section seven sixty point six of the Zone by law. Thus, it may fall under all other uses. And the number of parking spaces should be determined by the planning board to accommodate normal demands. The applicant indicates that a total of nineteen parking spaces are provided with ten in front of the administrative building area. One accessible space. In the front administrative building parking area and eight spaces at the lower garage level. Which are secured inside the security fence. The nineteen parking spaces are based on facility staffing and expected visitors. There are currently fifteen staff people anticipated to use the facility. The eight lower parking spaces adjacent to the garage after parking for personal cars with a distribution crew and superintendent of distribution. The front administrative building air parking area will be the personal, the personnel vehicles of.
Water treatment staff.
Of water treatment staff. There will be two additional parking spaces for visitors and the ADA parking space. If staffing levels increase, additional parking will be required within location of the parking. Subject planning board if you have a problem. The planning board finds that the proposed parking of nineteen spaces appears to be sufficient for the proposed UPS edition. All trucks and operating equipment will be stored inside the garage door. Of the building to be maximum extent practical. The landscape screen to the west of the site minimizes headlight glare to the extent possible. Lights will be cut off, fixtures and st- shielded to minimize glare. The buyer department has determined that width and road composition of the buyer department access road is acceptable. Access to the water treatment plant is controlled. By a security fence with controlled access to authorized vehicles and personnel only. The planning board assigns that the site plan meets the standard of review of Citrix Zone Bylaw section. Section seven seventy seventy point six C, your safety driveway layout, number of parking spaces, access to service and. Minimizing headlight glare as addition. Should they not be something here camera for the cemetery, the two of those spaces?
No.
No? No?
They can park, they park in the front visitor area.
Okay, but we don't need to.
No, I don't think we do, I mean, it's clearly shown on the site. If that's what the board wants.
No, I'm just bringing it up because it wasn't certain before. Alright? Nine, section seven seventy point six D, site plan approval standard D. Adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage, refuse, and other waste resulting from the use. Using committed on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply and distribution and a fire fighting facilities on site. Finally, the Board of Health has approved the onsite sanitary wastewater absorption system. A dumpster area is provided on the south side of the building and on the outside of the security fence slash drive. The DPW Water Division has commented that there is adequate water supply for the water treatment plant. There are hydrants located on the north and south side of the building and there will be a hybrid located in the buyer department section. Buyer department prefers the access drive. Planning board assigns that the site plan meets the standard of review of Citrix Zone Bylaw. Section seven seventy point six D for adequacy of methods of waste disposal. The adequacy of water supply and fire fighting facilities on site. The site groundwater level level varies during the year and varies between a minimum of twenty eight inches and fifteen feet below existing. Range. This presents a structural and waterproof challenge located and build with a facility in this location. Necessitating a requirement to continually pump groundwater around the foundation to manage for leakage and foundation oil properties during this construction. The applicant proposes to install a series of groundwater foundation collection sums. That will be designed to pump groundwater to the temporary de-watering settling basin. The de-watering settling basin. Overland to Tapback Repond. The de-watering settling basin is the temporary storage feature directly south of the building equipment. That will collect groundwater from the foundation area via the de-watering sum during construction. The capacity of the de-watering settling basin is approximately eighteen thousand three hundred cubic feet. Approximately a hundred and thirty seven thousand gallons storage volume. The settling basin is designed for high broad capacity of one thousand. GPM, two point three hours storage volume with the highest anticipated steady state. Groundwater estimate to be ten gallons per minute, nine point five days storage volume. Though higher flows may occur during off-wallop and following precipitation events. The applicant states that operational groundwater pumping system drains do not go to the stormwater system. Because they are not diverting stormwater, but rather they are diverting untreated groundwater. Which will be discharged overland to the pond by a temporary level spreader. The management of the groundwater flows during permanent operations is proposed by a spa. By a series of gravity flow under drain piping systems. Over water treatment building that discharge to overland, overland direct discharge points. To the west and north of the stormwater basin. Ten, section seven seventy point six E, site plan approval standard E. Adequacy of the surface of stormwater drainage and strong melt runoff within and from the site, including but not limited to all walkways. Driveways, buildings, parking and load codes. Finally, the site plan and stormwater report will be viewed by the Board's consulting engineer. Janet Bernato, PE of the force unit of the building. The plans are bottomed by in response to the comments. The applicant has confirmed that there will be no increase in rate of walling or runoff for the proposed site and all watering quality. Water quality standards are met. The Water Resource Protection District requirements will be met with recharge of precipitation to the groundwater. As the stormwater management system is designed to meet stormwater and water quality requirements. Including that stormwater quality will be improved by reducing total suspended solvents, DSS. By at least ninety percent as required by the Zone by law. The stormwater management system is designed to meet the standards of of the MABGDP Stormwater Management Handbook. Snowstorm drainage as follows. The primary snow storage area is located to the west of the back driveway and loading area. Additional snow storage areas are located east of the front parking area. South of the empty parking on the south side of the building. If the proposed stormwater drainage system includes best management practices, BMPs. Including deep sum catch basins, water quality units, bio retention basins with sediment, pour bays, and infiltration basin. These BMPs will provide pre-treatment and runoff and capture of oils and sediments while not increasing rate of of. Rate of walling runoff. The review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consulting engineer and their approval. Of the site plan eliminates. The requirement for separate stormwater permit under the Stormwater General Bylaw and its regulations, any work that forms complaints. The application attests the drainage system can be expected to result in both development runoff characteristics. Including peak flow, total volume runoff, and water quality runoff to be equal or less than pre-developing conditions. The site plan meets the standard of Citrix Zone Bylaw, section seven seventy point six E. For adequacy of stormwater management in the Water Resource Protection District. Eleven, section seven seventy point six F, site plan approval standard F. If the site is located. Within the Water Resource Protection District, the adequacy of provisions made to protect against toxic, toxic or hazardous materials. Our oil discharge, our loss resulting from corrosion, accidental damage, spillage, or vandalism. Through measures such as spill control provisions in the vicinity of chemical or fuel delivery ports. Securing storage areas with toxic or hazardous materials or oil and in storage. Indoor storage provisions for corrotable or dissolvable materials. Finally, the entire site is in the Water Resource Protection District. The proposed stormwater management systems include wooded deep sum catch basins and oil and grit. Grit step orders place pride to any conveyance of stormwater runoff. From paved areas to proposed stormwater bio retention bases and infiltration basin. Two continuous selective separated units provide for the removal of trash, debris, and floatables such as oil and grease. And need the ninety percent TSS removal requirement. There will be a five thousand gallon tight tank that has all last lab slash sampling waste directed to. Which tank will be pumped out to ensure it does not overflow. The applicant noted there will be no outdoor storing chemicals, temporary or otherwise. The proposed building has a garage to allow unloading of all materials inside the building. A technical memorandum dated August tenth, twenty twenty three details the sterns metal water treatment process. The memorandum explains the chemicals to be used in the water treatment plan, WTP. The purpose of the various chemicals, quality to be quantity to be stored, and where the chemicals will be stored. The storage includes secondary containment of at least one hundred ten percent of the bulk chemical volume for each chemical. And bio suppression is required for each chemical. There will be no floor drains in the chemical room except for the safety showers. Any potential spill will be contained within the secondary contaminated containment area. And will be manually cleaned and removed from the WTP operators. Or a specialized chemical cleanup contractor. The WTP will be a zero liquid discharge plan with respect to processed waste. There will be an emergency spill cleanup plan for the site prior to operation of site. The site plan meets the standard of Citrix Zone Bylaw, section seven seventy point six F. For adequacy of control of toxic and hazardous materials in the Water Resource Protection District. Twelve. Section seven seventy point six G, site plan approval standard G. Minimizing the volume of cut and fill, the number of trees of six inch caliber operator removed. The length of stone walls remove soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finally, the applicant has provided a cut fill analysis. There is extensive cut and fill on the site. The applicant indicates there will be a net import of fill approximately sixty one thousand. Cubic yards, assuming reuse of cut material to the site as they are bringing in more materials than excavated. In the excavated materials suitable, they will be reused for proposed grading on the site. Much fill will be used to create the slope on the lower part of the infiltration basin with a four to one slope. On the outside of the basin and a three to one inside basin. Cut and fill has been minimized to the extent possible for the proposed site development and building. A tree survey has been performed and integrated into the landscape plan. There is a fifty foot buffer for parking along Chief Justice Pushing Highway. It is untrued. In that location will remain undisturbed except to allow for access and egress to the site. The building set back to the west of the site remains fully ventilated for thirty feet. Except for loud walkway access to the existing cemetery. An extensive landscape plan has been developed to mitigate trees up for the project and provide a landscape screening. An erosion and sedimentation control plan will be used with stage construction, stage de-watering, and a large sedimentation sum. And an EPA NPDES with this construction general permit and or NEPTIS general permit. De-watering and remediation discharges and associate associated stormwater pollution prevention plan. Will also be required. The site plan meets the standard of the Citrix Zone Bylaw, section seven seventy point six G. On thirteen, section seven seventy point six H, site plan approval standard H. Minimize obstruction of scenic views for the public accessible locations. Finally, the site plan meets the standard of Citrix Zone Bylaw, section seven seventy point six H. As seen abused with property, Chief Justice Pushing Highway are preferred to the greatest extent possible with the fifty foot buffer for parking. Views from Tapback Repond and the reservoir are minimized. Fourteen, section seven seventy point six point I. Section seven seventy point six point I, site plan approval standard I. Parking areas shall be adequately buffered and shaded to using native vegetation. Parking lots with tender room spaces shall be planted with at least one shade tree for ten spaces. Of a caliber of at least two and a half inches D V H. With each tree providing shade to the parking area. Parking areas and visually creating elements such as dumpsters and loading docks. Shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion for the public ways and residentially home or self areas. In addition, suitable screening of such areas by wood fences and dense native evergreen edges. Five feet or more at the time of planting shall be utilized. The use of chain line fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting include lighting on the exterior of a building. Or lighting in the parking areas shall be arranged to minimize glare and light spill over to the neighbors' properties. No outdoor light shall be located more than twenty feet above the ground. Finding. A landscape bubble will be created to the west, north and east of the building. It will be largely evergreen with a mixture of deciduous trees. The parking area in front of the building is buckled by the fifty foot parking buffer to Chief Justice Bushing Highway. Shade trees are provided in the parking area or the edge to provide the required trees. For parking, parking space planted at a size of two and a half, two and a half inch D V H minimum. The dumpster and loading dock are located to be visually buffered from the public way. An eight point five chain link fence with barbed wire top restricts access to the non-public portions of the site. And W T P. No outdoor light is located more than twenty feet above the ground. And the L E D outdoor lighting will be cut off or shielded to minimize glare to a button properties, including any wall mounted lights. Example at the loading dock. The outdoor lights shall also be controlled to reduce the light level to no more than fifty percent. During non-use and overnight hours unless operations are active or otherwise required for security purposes during those periods. Requirements of by law seven, section seven seventy point six I have substantially been met. Fifteen, section seven seventy point six J, site plan approval standard J. Safe, functional and convenient pedestrians, bicycles and where practical transit access. And continuity of pedestrian and bicycle network in the property and nearby pedestrian and bicycle facilities. And trip generators. Finding. There are safe, functional walkways to the front of the building with public access provided for unexpected. There is also a public access walkway, cemetery, the public parking area. Bicycle parking is provided. To the bicycle lanes. The requirements of the bylaw have been met to the extent practical for drinking water treatment plant. The site entitled Town of Situ Maps, four fifty three Chief Justice Bushing Highway. Sterns Meadow drinking water treatment plant. Site plan approved dated August tenth, twenty twenty three with revisions October sixth, twenty twenty three. November fifteenth, twenty twenty three and December one, twenty twenty three. By water and current consisting of twenty eight land sheets. Meet three requirements of the Town of Situ Zone by law section seventy seventy point six. Site plan review, standards of review, doing very consistent with a reasonable use of the site for the purpose permitted. By the regulations of the district in which the land is located. You got them?
All right, let's just go one by one. I mean, you know, if anybody has any comments now, speak now. Finding one. Finding two. Finding three. What about you, three? Back to the beginning.
Well, one question on finding three.
I don't.
So I've got finding three, fifteen point five seven acres with fourteen point nine five, is this supposed to be square feet or acres?
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's.
Number four.
Just the thirty four foot for.
Yeah. Five. Six.
Um, has this actually been approved by the board or they're waiting for us to issue?
They're wait, I've talked to them, they're, they've, they've gotten approval. They're waiting for us to issue before they issue. We work together so that they don't issue anything before we issue something. So that we're working cooperatively together. Number six. Seven. Eight.
And so eight. Um, at the end of the first paragraph. To the maximum extent practical. What, what would that intend to come?
The parking, there's space within the garage, majority of the equipment that. Even other operations has involved equipment that is in the store on the site on a regular basis. There could be periods when they have specialized piece of equipment on site. Could be periods when the interior garage space is being used to store materials for a project. That not all of the interior parking spaces are available for equipment. The equipment mounted on a trailer is being used the next morning. In some of those instances. Wouldn't be practical to store that in the garage because garage is being used for other purposes for those limited periods. But the intent of wire is to store their equipment in the garage that's being built for that purpose. But doing so under any and all conditions is not.
Snowplows must be.
Excuse me?
Right, snowplows. I mean, the D V W said plows, all the plows. Don't, all the trucks and the plows don't fit in when they're all assembled.
Ah, different story. The impetus, everything would.
I understand that, but this is why, this is why we're. This is why they, they wanted the word to the maximum extent practical. And. Who decides what is practical or what's waste? And I know that's another nice term, but we can ask. That we decide that to put everything we possibly can away that we can every night, correct? Just a lot of man right back to the. Thank you.
Agreed.
Yep. Do you want different language or do you want, is this sufficient?
How about? Just, first of all, we want to, everything that they've got is going to be stored in garage. Things like you just said where, oh, we had a project, so we're going to store material in the garage. I say no, right? If you need to store materials. Bring in some, you know, store it somewhere else, bring it in. Um, I, I just, I just think you. What we don't want is for this to become the loophole that, you know, it just becomes, you know, a junkyard, right? So.
I don't want it to be a work yard, which is.
Right, that's not the intent, right?
Yeah, that's not the intent.
How about, you know, except in extraordinary circumstances?
So you want to say to the maximum extent practical except in extraordinary circumstances?
No, strike to the maximum extent practical and say except under extraordinary circumstances.
To be determined by whom?
Well, we're going to have to give them some.
Responsibility.
Yeah.
We can only hope that's a thing will happen.
I think it's, it's just a little higher standard than the maximum.
So you don't want to say to the maximum extent practical, you want to say except under extraordinary circumstances?
Yes.
We got eight? Nine. I have a question about number five. A minimum of twenty eight inches at fifteen feet, that, that's a huge delta. And that's like low and looking here. That just seems a lot more than I can. Mr. Andrew Jones, the father of my heart, right? And I guess.
Drain water.
Yeah.
It's high groundwater.
Each really high groundwater, so again, you're. But I'm a little ribbon here all the time. Anybody else have anything on fourth?
I think the, the note that says, kind of towards the end, it says the applicant states that the operator's ground water.
Yes.
I think that should say that construction. There is no operational groundwater pumping there. Yes, like a normal operating, they're not pumping any groundwater.
So what do you want to say, construction?
That the construction groundwater pumping system.
The applicant states that the construction groundwater pumping system.
Drain do not go to the stormwater system. Yes, but they're going to the, the temporary de-water settling base. And then, and then overflowing directly to the pond. Be at the level spreader. So I just, I just want to be clear, there's no pumping during what I'm quoting operations. It's only, this is, the only pumping groundwater is during construction.
Right.
We also have a name. Is that right? That's correct, okay. Uh, I think second sentence under the binding, the dumpsters inside the security.
It's good, yeah, I'm.
The dumpster area on the south side of the building is inside security. Where is that?
I got it, I got it.
We got it.
Ten. Eleven.
I was here on the floor range. Says there will be no floor drains in the chemical. I think if, if there are floor drains, I didn't realize there were, I said there weren't floor drains. But if there are, except for the safety shower, which will discharge to the tight.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you want to say except for the safety showers, which will discharge to the tight tank?
Yeah. Those are beyond the board range, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I have a question about the five thousand gallon tight tank, how often will that be empty or is that a huge disruption that you check down as staff work?
That'll be monitored and on, so that, if it hasn't.
Okay. Yep.
The, just after that, or the end of that sentence, um, we do have sample analyzers where the flow through them is able to be diverted. Uh, back to the plant, so lab slash sampling, which just involves. Uh, the sentence says there'll be a five thousand gallon tank. It has all lab slash sampling waste directed to it. We do have analyzers that would put it in the sampling category, but.
Yeah, I think that was intended to address samples you might work on in the lab.
Yes.
Four thousand, so that's fine, yeah.
As long as this works.
But if you wanted to say it has all non-odible lab sampling. Stay. If it doesn't, some sample, some of the sample water can go back, it's not all.
Yeah, as long as it goes back to that water, that doesn't matter, right? That's what I think, well, it does because that's what it's supposed to. Just want to make sure that in. Any sampling, any work that was done is going to the, you know, to the.
Well, I have a little question about eleven. So the potential spill will be continued to the secondary district area. Some is there's special training that you people that how how is that, can you all some people that people in house trade to do that, how is that work? This is for my.
And there's a, there's a barrier that, that contains a hundred and ten percent of whole storage, right? So it can't go anywhere.
Okay.
Correct, and.
Then you have to clean it up, correct?
Town, town staff having appropriate training to do so or bringing in outside staff. Um, I did another question on, uh, the prior page where it says the proposed building in the garage will allow unloading of all materials inside the building.
I don't know where you are.
I'm sorry, I'm still on the.
There was a sentence at the bottom of the page.
I, I presume that the water department would occasionally unload pipe that would be outside the building. Oh, I don't know that. We're going to come back to the, to the maximum extent practical type language, uh, with that all.
I'm sorry.
You care what I'm.
What's in eleven?
The proposed garage, building has a garage to allow loading of materials inside the building to the maximum extent practical.
I don't want to see the outside. Um, used for storing pipes and things like that because it then becomes.
Work yard.
A work yard, and that's not the intent. Or it should not be the intent.
That's, they told us that it was a big of focus about community.
There is a, shown on the site plan, a specific pad on the lower side of the parking areas that will contain. It would become for over sixty or something like that, sticks a pipe in that area to be used during an emergency water main break. It's not intended for thousands of linear feet of pipe for water main project.
All right.
He is, um, in the eight parking spaces on the south side of the site. It's a, the top, so the rest of the two parking spaces, that twenty. Now you, also the storage part, yes.
So. The, the garage will be used for off-loading material except for storage on that particular. On that particular rack.
Yes.
So it's not a blanket, sort of. You can store, you know, boxes and whatever, right? So.
Interior to the garage, there is a storage mezzanine with a. With a hoist to allow for hybrid spouts, things like that to be loaded onto vehicles inside the building from that storage mezzanine. So you count it for that space inside.
So should it say that, um, others are inside the building? Um, there will be storage of unlimited amount. Piping material in a designated location. Rather than broader. Then that, because I agree with them, they want it to become. You know, kind of the work yard, graveyard.
There's a one in the bottom piping storage outside.
Right.
Well.
Um, just a question, it says excavated materials are suitable. What determines that they're suitable? What, what? I'm not sure what you're trying to do there.
There's an engineering spec for material suitable, suitable fill is a term of art that defines, uh. The characteristics of that material in terms of organic material or muck or large cobbles that make it not suitable for use as general fill.
And it is not material that can be treated or screened or whatever.
I mean, if the contractor is able to screen out large cobbles and use that material on site, I think the prospect of both of these.
Even for structural fill, that we're saying.
Uh, structural fill is also slightly different term, so suitable material like the.
I think, I think his terminology is right.
I think we just want to encourage people to use material to aid in a radical break. This is up in, and have to dispose of the old stuff.
Certainly most cost effective way to go.
Thirteen.
Oh, before you leave, well, there's a, um, maybe. There's a statement in the last sentence that says N P D S federal government permit, the indoor. General permit, why indoor, why not?
I'm not an expert on lifted permits. I know that they need a NFT general permit for de-watering and remediation discharges. I believe they still need a NFT general permit too, but I'm not a hundred percent certain. I tried to swing up on it this week, and I'm not a hundred percent figured it out. So. I thought the indoor covered it.
Do you guys know?
I believe it does as well, but the indoor covered, the wording covers.
Right.
Thirteen?
Um, just the last sentence. Karen, it's up before, but it said views from tech factory pond and the rest part minimized.
Yeah.
Should it say you shed impacts or something?
That's fine. You should have impacts.
Yeah.
From tech factory pond and the rest part are minimized. Fourteen. A little concern about the words substantially. The requirements of the bylaw help substantially admit. Look here, I can take it out, they, but I just, it's just kind of those are the.
Have been, is very. Just removed substantially.
All right, everything else on fourteen is okay? Thirteen? Yep. Awesome.
I'm.
Awesome. Awesome, remember? Okay.
All right.
Hi.
It's a general question, I thought we talked about it at the last meeting, there was a requirement that the. Be marked.
That's new additions. That's the condition. She said that's the point. Yeah.
Sorry.
We're not done here. No, the hard offer. Yeah, I'm sorry, we're behind schedule, we're gonna be, at least half hour on this decision. We had some technical difficulty that we didn't get it going, sorry, sorry.
All right, you ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Did everyone say aye?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm moved to approve the site plant's strength metal water treatment plant at four fifty-three Chief Justice Pushing Highway, subject to the following conditions. One, the site plan entitled Town Situate Mass, four fifty-three Chief Justice Pushing Highway, Sterns, that are drinking water treatment plant. Site plan approval dated August tenth, twenty twenty-three, with revisions on quarter six, twenty twenty-three, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, or December one, twenty twenty-three. By Water and Current, consisting of twenty-eight plan sheets, landscape plan dated August twenty twenty-three, with revisions through twelve, eleven, twenty twenty-three. By Halverson, Key, and Vaughn Studio, consisting of two sheets. Civil engineer figures by Water and Current dated November twenty twenty-three are approved, except that they may be modified. Changes are necessary to meet the conditions below. Two. Two reduced sets of eleven by seventeen prints of the most current plans and PDFs shall be vital to the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference or the. Three, the building shall meet all pertinent requirements of the Massachusetts State Building Code. Four, the applicant shall comply with tight requirements in the situating bylaw, excepting otherwise relieved by the zoning board of deals and their approval and subsequent. Yeah. Subsequent. Written decision. Five, materials and details of construction shall meet all pertinent requirements of DPW Board of Health, Fire Department, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Building Department, and Commission on Disabilities. Where this is, the site plan administrative review requires approval permitting or licensing from any local state or federal agency, such as required. Approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the Town Situate Planning Board's approval of this site. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to commencement of construction. Six, no underground irrigation systems shall be allowed connected to the water distribution system, or in any manner used municipal water in accordance with the policy. Made effective by the Board's selection on October eighth, twenty fourteen, and reaffirmed by the City's Water Commissioners on May twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with the policy must be, must be supplied. By onsite sources of proud of water suppliers at the expense of the property owner. Seven, this site plan includes slash stormwater permit must be recorded in the registry of deeds with proof furnished to, to. The planning office prior to the pre-construction conference. Failure to record the permit is a violation of the permit and subject fines included in the Town Situate General Bylaws. Eight, Town will store the operating equipment for the water treatment plant in the garage. There will be times when it is not feasible to keep all trucks in the garage, but a majority of the time, every effort made to keep the trucks in the garage. There should not be any extended period when the trucks are stored outside. Utilities, parking, traffic, and erosion control. Nine, DPW current cut permit and M.A.T. pilot access permit. Shall be provided to the planning department prior to issuance of a building permit. Ten, gasoline, oil, and chemical abrasives shall not be stored onsite in the Water Resource Protection District. No road salt shall be used or stored onsite, no vehicle washing shall occur onsite. Eleven, as the law is in the Water Resource Protection District and has rendered more than fifteen percent impermeable. And a system of artificial recharge is provided, a certification that groundwater is not being rated, shall be provided prior to application for the building permit. The detention basins and infiltration basins are designed and shall be installed at the bottom elevation, a minimum of three feet above seasonal. High groundwater elevations, stormwater during construction as well as in perpetuity after construction. Is not allowed to increase in rate or volume to adjacent properties, the street or off-site. It is the applicant's responsibility to comply with specific requirement at all times, particularly during all phases of construction. Thirteen, no clearing beyond the limit of moral slash limit of clearing as shown on the plan is allowed. The limit of clearing shall be staked in the field prior to construction commencing, inspected by the Town Planner, and maintained throughout construction. Fourteen, stormwater management system must be retained and maintained as designed, both during and after construction. Maintenance must be per the approved operation and maintenance O and M plan and is required in perpetuity. To the extent that the approval O and M plan does not adequately maintain the design performance of the stormwater management system. The applicant shall modify the O and M plan provisions to meet the design performance and provide an updated copy of the modified plan to board. Fifteen, two signs shall be installed with the fire department vehicle access. De-marked emergency vehicle access only. The control security gauge should have access from the Town Situate FOB slash badge, which should the fire department emergency. Response vehicle can gain immediate active secure area inside the security fence. Sixteen, there is a separate segmentation sum, construction de-watering. This, it is encouraged that no construction de-watering water is allowed in stormwater segmentation sum. Any construction de-watering that enters the stormwater basin should be done in dry weather and not impact the efficacy of stormwater system. Construction de-watering sum shall not overflow and shall be monitored and alarmed to prevent any such overflow at all times of destruction, de-watering pumps are operating. Seventeen, sizing calculations and flow cabins for the temporary sedimentation bases shall be provided to the Town Planner. Prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference along with the activated NFT permit. Eighteen, the final construction de-watering plan shall be submitted to the Town Planner for review and approval prior to issuance of a building permit. Such plan shall address a construction sequence and detailing of the watering system operating process, including but not limited to the yet-to-be-designed slash located. Foundation underdrinks, which are to be constructed during the de-watering effort and prior to the foundation being bored. The plan shall include monitoring and reporting as required by permits, including groundwater volumes, quality, and inspection of the de-watering system. To avoid erosion of overland discharge. Areas, C condition fifty-two. Nineteen, all lighting shall be LED lighting, the exterior lighting. Shall be downlighting and conform to the lighting plan with a maximum height of twenty feet light fixtures. The lighting in the parking lot shall be programmable as to on and off motion detection and level of intensity. The light shall be designed to allow for operations at a non-occupied light level of no more than fifty percent of fixture full movement output at times. When the site is not occupied and during overnight periods. The applicant shall conduct a testing plan during commissioning to determine if the light, if the security light level can be minimized to below fifty percent. And shall thereafter operate the security light levels at that final determined level. Construction. Twenty, a pre-construction conference will be required. To the start, prior to the start of construction, which conference shall include representatives of the DPW, the site contractor, owner's project manager, OMP. Town Planner, a Conservation and Natural Resource Officer, and any other town departments as necessary or required by the Town Planner. Twenty-one, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, a commitment to cover. Funding for inspections by consulting engineer for stormwater shall be provided to the planning board. A schedule of construction activity shall be given to the Town Planner along with stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIPs, and NFTs permit. The construction general permit, general permit for de-watering and remediation discharges, and SWIP shall be provided to the Town Planner for review and approval. Fourteen days prior to submission to the EPA and scheduling the pre-construction conference. All operators shall be advised that SWIP. And stormwater permit must be adhered to during construction. Twenty-two, inspections and other observations made according to the SWIP shall be submitted weekly to the board. Twenty-three, an illicit discharge statement shall be signed by the property owner and submitted to the Town Planner prior to pre-construction conference. Twenty-four, all workers in the right-of-way, R O W, of Chief Justice Pushing Highway shall be coordinated with the DPW and Mass DOT. The DPW shall be notified prior to the start of work within the R O W of Chief Justice Pushing Highway. Other than as required by this, by the necessary work in the right-of-way, there shall be no parking or idling of vehicles on Chief Justice Pushing Highway during construction. Twenty-five, stormwater control measures shall be maintained by the applicant according to the stormwater management system. Operation maintenance plan submitted for the project and the stormwater pollution prevention plan. All clearing and earthmoving operations shall occur, shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place. A standalone copy of the operation and maintenance plan, including its appendices. Signed by the property owner shall be provided prior to the reconstruction meeting. Twenty-six, if the drainage system is not performing as designed. End condition, or if stormwater is observed going through abutting properties on the street. The applicant shall cease work and immediately implement all necessary mitigation and permanently remedy. Remedy the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities and survives the issuance of a certificate of completion to apply during all ongoing operations of building the site. Twenty-seven, no sediment improving city water shall be allowed to the site during construction. Twenty-eight. Property lines of the subject property and living room work shall be marked up leg in the field under the direction of a surveyor. And notification given to Town Planner and Design Engineer a minimum of three days prior to commencement of construction. The property line is to remain staked at all times during construction. Twenty-nine. A crushed stone construction entrance as detailed about the plan is required and shall be installed prior to commencement of construction. The stabilized construction entrance shall be maintained throughout construction to prevent dirt from trapping onto the road. Water and sediment shall not be discharged into the infiltration basin until the site is fully stabilized. Thirty, prior to any land disturbance, erosion control shall be installed and inspected by the Town Planner or approved agent. At that time, the site shall be, shall also be stated to show the fields and drainage improvements. All stockpiles shall be surrounded by an erosion control barrier. Additional erosion controls shall, such as silt fence, silt saw, and/or hay bales placed prior to a precipitation event. May be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road or adjacent properties during construction. All erosion controls shall be installed per plan and shall be maintained in good working condition throughout construction. The applicant is responsible for maintaining and managing stormwater onsite throughout the construction period and during the transition to fully functional operations and maintenance. Construction approval in no way relieves the applicant from its obligation to ensure stormwater does not impact the abutting properties. And the applicant shall take all necessary steps to prevent such occurrences. Thirty-one. The Town Planner is to be notified when a stabilized construction entrance and erosion control measures are in place. When construction begins and when construction is completed for site inspections. If deemed necessary by the Town Planner, a consultation with the DPW engineering staff, temporary sedimentation basis, checking of silt socks. And/or noise and dust control may be required in addition to the erosion control measures shown on the plan. All erosion control measures shall remain until the Town Planner and as necessary with observation agent determines that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. Requests for inspections require forty-eight hours minimum notice. Thirty-two, construction shall proceed according to the construction basin plans. Thirty-three, all connections to town water shall be performed according to the specifications of the City DPW. Thirty-four, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturday, and shall, shall cease no later than seven AM. Or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sunday or legal, state, or federal holidays unless written approval is granted by the Town Planner prior to the work permit. The applicant shall manage construction lights, so they shall not be a nuisance to neighbors. Thirty-five, no on-street parking or loading or unloading of construction equipment or vehicles shall be permitted during construction. Unless a police detail is provided, if warranted, as determined by the police department. No trucks shall idle on public roads and no equipment shall idle onsite prior to seven AM on weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays. Thirty-six, all construction parking shall be onsite and unlooked otherwise approved by the building board. Thirty-seven, applicant shall provide the town if it roots. Instruction traffic will use so that safety hazard or material disruption. To the, of the public way, if he's safe passage, a police detail would be obtained by the applicant at his expense. Thirty-eight, all disturbed areas not receiving any other specialized treatment shall be loomed and seeded with six inches of clean foam. Thirty-nine, no staging or struck filing is allowed in any component of the stormwater system. Forty, inspection of the bottom of all infiltration systems must be performed by the planning board's consulting engineer and the design engineer. Prior to any backfill or system component installation to confirms, confirm suitability of soils. Forty-one, in an effort to reduce noise levels, the applicant shall keep all equipment that emanates sound from the structure of our site in proper working order. Through regular maintenance, especially de-watering equipment during overnight hours. Forty-two, site noise levels shall be reported. Forty-two, site noise levels shall conform to the Mass D E P's Division of Air Quality Control Noise Policy. Applicants shall provide noise readings at multiple locations around the building to demonstrate performance to no more than sixty-five dust DVA one meter from the building. Forty-three, the emergency generator will be in a noise suppression enclosure that will control sound to sixty-five decibels at one meter. This shall be tested and demonstrated, and test results submitted to the board as part of testing required to demonstrate performance. Forty-four, the applicant shall follow all regulations under Massachusetts Department of Biom净 Protection, three-ten CMR seven-point-zero-zero, air pollution control seven-point-zero-one, general regulations to prevent air pollution, and three-ten CMR seven-point-zero-nine, U, dust, odor, construction and demolition. For three-ten CMR seven-point-zero-nine, U, dust, odor, construction and demolition, water must be used to prevent excessive emission of particulate matter throughout construction project. Forty-five, construction activities shall be conducted in workmanlike manner at all times. Blown in dust or debris shall be controlled by the applicant through stabilization, wetting down, or other property storage and disposal methods. Forty-six, up to fifteen additional white pines or other approved evergreens, eight to ten feet tall, may be added to the planning to the planning board under the direction of the town planner to enhance the west buffer. Forty-seven, the buffer to the west of the village shall be replanted as soon as possible within appropriate growing seasons. Plants must be watered and monitored for three years. Time of planting will be documented by the rate of ninety percent provided to the board at the end of the period. After construction, forty-eight, a set of as-built plans stamped by a registered surveyor and reviewed by the registered professional engineer who designed the system shall be submitted to the planning board within thirty days of completion of the work. This plan shall include the construction conditions of stormwater management system, the permanent de-watering system, utility grading, building site amenities, and roadway. The as-built plan must be submitted, and such plans must be filed in compliance with your approval permit prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy. All grading and landscaping must be complete prior to the as-built submittal. Forty-nine, if signage identifying the building, other than for entrance, exit directions, or safety purposes, is incorporated at a later stage of the project's design, it shall be reviewed by the planning board prior to application or assigned permit. Fifty, no outdoor storage of chemicals is allowed. The proposed building has a garage to allow unloading all materials inside the building. A quick memorandum dated August tenth. Twenty-twenty-three, details of the stern metal water treatment process. The memorandum explains the chemicals to be used in the water treatment plant, WTP, the purpose of the various chemicals, the quantity of to be stored, and where the chemicals will be put. The storage includes secondary containment of at least one-hundred-and-ten percent of the bulk chemical volume for each chemical and five suppression as required for each chemical. There will be no floor drains in the chemical room. Any potential spill will be contained in the secondary containment area and will be manually cleaned and removed from the WTP operators or a specialized chemical cleanup contractor. The WTP will be a general liquid discharge plant with respect to processed waste. There will be an emergency spill cleanup plan for the site prior to operation of the site. The technical memorandum shall be followed and emergency spill cleanup plan provided to the owner, operator, and planning board prior to operations. Fifty-one, all lab sinks should discharge to the titanium. Fifty-two, refilling of the fuel oil for the emergency generator and any pumps used for de-watering and construction operations and construction vehicles shall be done with filling procedures that include safeguards to prevent fuel oil spills. Emergency spill supplies shall be kept on-site in accordance with an emergency spill cleanup plan. Fifty-three, removal of solids from the grime basins shall only be done during daylight hours of the day shift, Monday through Friday. The owner shall have a solid removal plan and ensures that the removal process does not result in any solids entering the stormwater system, and it shall be provided as an appendix to the stormwater operation and maintenance plan. All solids shall be legally disposed of off-site with no stockpile areas on-site. De-canned water for the grime basins shall not go to the stormwater system at any time, but shall be recycled through the input lines of the water treatment plant. Fifty-four, the under-basin water system under grime basins shall be designed for sure that a loss of power to or the use of collection sum does not result in overflow of sum or at any time result in recycled water entering the stormwater system. Fifty-five, the septic system shall only be used for sanitary wastewater. No lab waste or any other wastewater shall be put in the septic system. It shall only be disposed of through the tight tank. Fifty-six, if any future facility expansion is required, any septic expansion plan shall be permitted to and shall require the review and approval of the planning board. Fifty-seven, the applicant shall make every effort to develop and implement a plan to have a zero carbon facility. Eight, an eight-foot-high chain link fence with barbed wire on top shall be black line coated, steel chain link fence with rigid vertical slats for privacy adjacent to existing noise entrances. Fifty-nine, the landscape plan shall be adhered to as approved herein. A revised plan shall be divided prior to application for building permit showing the decreased limit of work for the wetland mitigation. No substitution shall be allowed without the approval of the town planner. All plants shall be maintained, and if landscaping is damaged or damaged, the owner shall replace the plants same size and quantity. We can say one more?
So, why don't we get to that at the end?
Okay. Go back and read the second.
Thank you.
No.
So, let's go through this. I'll call out the conditions one by one again. If you got a problem, speak now for everyone please. One.
Just on one, do you want to add? Most recent.
All right, I got them. You want the excavation class? Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. We should allow any irrigation or better weathering, most of the ways.
That's one point. For the three years that plants have been maintained, it may your car some other dedication.
No, you have to bring in a water truck.
You have to bring a water truck.
You have to bring in a water truck. There's not going to be irrigation systems.
There's no underground drainage.
Right. I'm taking it very well, so we have to irrigate everything. Seven. Eight.
Eight, we should strike the words of the Georgia. They should make every effort.
Seven, you should use two. Do you want to use the same language probably by fact? Nine. Ten. Eleven.
Very small energy. I've been believing that they have a few gallons or five gallons of gas some of their equipment distribution. So, when they have to keep those gaskets at a third-party site, the ten years of bulk storage, bulk storage.
Right, that's the box, right.
So, using bulk storage of gas things.
So, let's back up. I think when we had the conversation, there was no storage anywhere. So, are we saying now there is?
But typically, when the distribution guys have a trailer where they have things to go up to fix things, they have de-watering pumps and generators that oftentimes have, like if you had a gas, an onboard engine or whatever, you've got a the red truck of gasoline. The way this is written, they can't.
On the truck.
On the truck or on the trailer.
The critical thing is that never ends up in the ground water.
I just, the way this is written, they can't have the gas can on the trailer.
Then.
It's supposed to be stored inside and then put on the trailer right prior to going. That's what you're supposed to be doing.
Correct. This is talking about.
So, is there an inside storage location for these vessels? Like a fire.
They just put, they just put cans, portable cans of some on the trailers or in the truck.
I just heard two different things here. So, the portable cans go on the truck if the truck leaves.
Right.
Right? Is that right? So, the portable cans are stored somewhere inside in a flammable proof cabinet of some kind, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, that's the way that should be done, I guess. I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I think that ten has written prohibits that.
So, let's say except for, except for properly stored gasoline containers inside the building. Because we're not going to have exceptions for chemicals and other things.
Eleven. Twelve. Thirty. Forty. Fifty.
Where, and is this for the, intended to be for the exterior circulation route behind the building? And those two signage? Demarcating emergency vehicle access over?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So, that circulation around the back of the building is for operator use as well, not just for emergency vehicles. So, I'm not clear on where, where there is emergency vehicle access over.
Maybe you should just say emergency vehicle access.
But there'll be non-emergency access, so I'm just.
Oh, yeah, striking the word over. So, I think the IP has to tell those emergency vehicles go this way, right?
Yes, that's fine.
Sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen. I don't understand the sort of the edits that have been added. I think you should just say no construction de-watering is allowed in stormwater sedentation center. That's what everybody had said, so I'm not sure why we're carving out the ability to do that.
So, during construction, if the contractor needed to perform maintenance on the de-watering pump, they'd like the ability to, say, send that water to the stormwater basin on the interim basis while conducting maintenance activities to keep sediment from leaving the site. Trying to make sure that the contractor meets the intent of the regulation, they need the intent of the regulation, which is to control all the watering on-site, not impact the stormwater stations, but have flexibility to use that stored volume on the site if they need to further maintenance activities.
I don't think we should let that happen unless the town planner's been notified and has reviewed it. I don't think it should be an open invitation to do it. I mean, as we talked about this, it wasn't ever going to happen, and that's what we were trying to hold to. So, I would say, I would say if there becomes a need to do that, notify the town planner, get the town planner's approval.
That's fine.
Do you expect that they would have to a lot of maintenance this?
No. No, but in general, our comments are, you know, trying to make sure that we have common sense provisions in areas where it's all or don't allow for the flexibility of the contractor to maintain their site. We want to make sure that they have the ability to do so. The town planner notification, I think, is fair and appropriate.
I think we're trying to avoid making it some blanket loophole. You know, so much drive for it to.
I understand.
All right, so I'll add, I'll add that sentence.
Yeah.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, it should be MPDES permits.
Eighteen.
Just kind of in the middle of the yet-to-be-designed, located, I would say, temporary foundation under drains. Those are the, those are the sums for construction de-watering, right?
Okay.
And I don't think we need that paragraph unless you think it is apparent that it says C condition.
No, I just wanted you to go back to the end, so you saw.
No, I saw, I saw, I did.
I took care of it. It's not going to be, it's not going to be in there.
Yeah.
Nineteen.
Think that the last sentence just needs to be appended. You can just stick it fine in fourteen unless as required for security purposes.
Would you like to make that first?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Finding fourteen basically says you're going to keep the lights down under fifty percent as we agreed to unless, as otherwise required for security purposes.
During those periods.
Correct, during.
During off-hours and non- bye periods.
Twenty. Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, Karen, I would add after stormwater and de-water because you may need consulting support, not just for the stormwater system, but for the de-watering system.
What do you want me to add where?
On the second sentence, second line, right? It says, this inspection by the consulting engineer for stormwater and de-water.
All right. One and two. Twenty-three. Twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-six. Twenty-seven. Twenty-eight. Twenty-nine. Thirty. Thirty-one. Thirty-two. Thirty-three. Thirty-four.
Can I ask why there's an exception by people for marking? No construction control take place unless written approval is granted. Why, why would that be? Like a crazy state holiday or something?
They want to be able to work on state holidays. There's, there's some state holidays that they probably want to work, like Veterans Day, Washington's birthday, ones that, so if you don't want to allow that, then we strike it.
Those are federal holidays, right?
There's some state and federal holidays, yes.
Patriots' Day.
Patriots' Day, no. So, if you don't want to allow that, we strike it. It's up to you guys. No, I think it's fine.
Is that the plan?
I don't think that that's up to the contractor. There will be probably some, you know, site maintenance activities that may need to occur if that admires town planners and people, then that would be a great. Definitely appropriate.
I think this. Think it's fine, as long as Karen looks at it.
We don't allow anybody to work on holidays. Ask it has some people in the room. We don't allow.
Disrupt the calls or write next one on the trace.
Thirty-five. Thirty-six. Thirty-seven. Thirty-eight. Thirty-nine. Forty. Forty-one. Forty-two. It's supposed to be one or ten.
One is five.
One is five.
Did you start?
What?
Well, uh, remember when we get to forty-three, there's a typo with the distance.
Is that ten meters? Okay. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine.
Forty-eight, I, I just, uh, my cat. It said within thirty days of completion to work. I would like to suggest that it's within ninety days of substantial completion. There's a moment in time in construction, you designate substantial completion. There still might be. Quite a bit of work after that, and to get the esboles together takes. A little bit of time, so. I'm just trying to.
The whole idea is that we get the esboles.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to fit in something that fits with the way contract language is set, which would be, I'd say ninety days of substantial completion to work this. They'll be working for another ninety or a hundred days sometimes after substantial completion. A little things here, punch lists.
Is that like the punch list period?
Yeah, punch list things, or there might be a, a small side thing that is waiting for a part to show up or something.
Forty-nine. Fifty.
Just to revise our material consistent with the contract planning.
I think just that wording thing, Karen, where it says towards the bottom. Removed from the wastewater treatment, WTP operators. Probably say five.
Five, right, yeah, yeah. Fifty-one. You should, will.
Shall.
Shall, yeah.
Also, that should do the emergency eye wash.
Wrong, fifty-one.
Fifty-one, yeah.
So.
Lab sinks and emergency eye wash shall.
Cor- correct.
Um. Eye wash, so one washer. Are there multiple eye washers?
Two eye washers, yes. In fifty, consistent with the finding, there are four drains that we come to the room for those safety showers. So there are assets in there that. Deepwater now. There are no four drains in the chemical room, which is just to be, and then she can store the plumbing.
Fifty-two. Fifty-three. Fifty-four. Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, the second sentence, no lab waste or other wastewater, this is rather lab wastewater chugging into the settlement systems, we actually have. We're sorry.
Fifty-six. Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Um. I think we need some language that includes, uh, a report of feedback, this would come here.
So which, what, what, what do you want me to keep in here?
Well, we have said shall report any note on such performance.
Alright, so we want that, that sentence will go with that, we have that action. And I don't know, it has to be tailored, measured as much as possible.
Yeah, I think you could just go to the finding board, right? Plan out, most of the board. Planning board.
So why we say town plan or the copy to the planning board?
Yeah.
Alright, so the town, and so we take out the last sentence, is, I have that stringed, do you want that in or out?
In.
Okay.
I think before they begin, we should get the first report.
Okay.
It would be helpful to understand the context for that. This is, this is an industrial facility. We're following energy code, including the situation of stretch code. We provided the ability, the future mounting of solar on the middle of the roof. And, uh. You know, our using premium efficient motors and very good frequency drive within the building.
I'd be happy to talk about the context, which is part of our master plan, which is to address climate change, sort of, right? And plenty of industrial facilities have to address climate change. Plenty of them are attempting to do so as a zero carbon facility. So that's, it's not an excuse one way or the other. Um, this is a fifty-year-plus facility. And I think we should be setting the examples.
Well, PS aspiration really will be the reality of it at some point.
Just wanna reassure the board that the, the plan that meets here proceeds.
Okay.
At all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really just talking about taking the next step.
And I think we want to be able to improve on it as technology.
Fifty-eight. I'm gonna take out the rigid vertical slats, yes. We certainly have to do that. Fifty-nine.
Just the period, uh, of that, uh, provision applying, same period referred as, we're showing forty-seven.
I'm sorry.
So it says all plants, all plants shall be maintained if plants escaping, if damage or dies or shut, those such plants in the same size quantity. Obviously, the natural environment, trees grow, die. I think the intent of this is. To have them fully established and. Uh, condition forty-seven puts a three-year period, which is longer than typical.
So maybe we should say all plants should be maintained in accordance with conditions.
What's that?
Forty-seven. Right.
Alright, so then I think we have to add on our condition number sixty, our revised setup plan shall be submitted prior to building permit. Show correct rims, inverts, outlets for underdrains, revised limit of work. Uh, to include the wetland mitigation area, revised O and M plan if necessary. Is there anything else?
Um. Yes, I would, given what we're talking about with these permanent, um, water, water. I would just wanna make sure that we're evaluating the efficacy of discharge. And we'll make modifications if we're creating, you know, erosion problem, creating. An overland flow to the, to the neighbor's problem.
But we're not gonna know that during.
Not during construction. I'm saying after, when, when we get to the first, you know. Eye groundwater season, we should evaluate that.
So we wanna add a condition sixty-one.
Yeah, you could, you could call it a separate condition.
So we want that condition to say.
Um, the applicant shall evaluate the performance. Of the dewatering discharge system. And ensure that there is no, uh, overland erosion. And or, um. Impact to the neighbor's property.
I actually think that that's covered in the conditions, but we'll add this.
Where, where, twenty-six.
Because otherwise it could get shut down. If they have, if there's any type of.
This is dewatering now, not stormwater. Yeah, that, that's why I'm, we're just calling it out separately, right? Is, cause nobody's gonna.
Okay. Well, we'll add this in here. Yeah.
This is just gonna keep flowing, right? During, during the spring, it's just gonna be a run and rip.
Alright, so I'll add that condition. Is there any, is there anything else?
Uh, no, not for me.
Our seventh is amended.
Alright, so the, the previous, um, time of filing, I have to have this filed by the twenty-second.
About twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Or, thank you. Yeah, so fifty-year, big fifty-year project. Need to plus hopefully.
We'll come back and check it out.
Weird for your team to learn something.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so if I move that along.
Seven thirty, we're a little late. Um, we have.
We have continuing, immediate.
Plus, okay, uh. I'm, looks at the outcome request, we continue public record, site plan, administrative review, special permit, that's the right one. Four, stormwater permit, the Blue Center, district, Greenwood, Gateway District, Greenwood Village Center, South District. VCM, G E G, V C N, February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
You guys take the conversation outside.
I think six, yes, six. But did you say, you didn't? Uh, until February eighth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M, and to continue the time for Ash to file with the town clerk until April the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Okay.
Yeah.
On a favor.
Uh.
That was a negative.
Second period, you're discussing for sale loopholes, but. No, no, I have a need or back of the case, I don't believe he's. Sorry, could you play it, I'm just keeping.
No, I know, I know, I've progressed.
Really want to find a weekend, anyone here close to some of the areas?
Um, so I'm aware of what's happening, so why don't you tell them I'm aware of the rest?
I know, I'm just gonna give everybody this is a little perspective, I don't know if I did enough facts, but, um, it just was a little bit about who we are. But, um. Thank you for, uh, meeting with us, um. Sale Home, um, we are here at recommendation of the CPC, who we met with on Monday. You can go on to CPC, uh, on our project, four eight oh nine, empty way, uh, for affordable housing. I wanna let you know about what Sale Home is and what we have planned for eight oh nine. Sale Home stands for Supported Access to Independent Living. Um, we are a group who, um. Are looking to provide housing options for individuals with disabilities that are supported. There is a housing crisis for this population in that the need it outpaces the, the reality of what's available. Um, group homes through the state really only attend to about fifty percent of the population, which means there's a huge population of individuals that need a little bit of support. To live independently, and that's who we're trying to help through our initiative. Um, Sale Home is, we purchased eight oh nine in October. We actually met with Karen and Patricia in, prior to purchasing the building to make sure that. Um, anything from your perspective, uh, we would be on top of. Um, we did purchase it under a nonprofit status, which we, um. Started in October. So we purchased eight oh nine in October, we have our nonprofit status. Um, we have a builder and we have an architect. The building has four end uses. Um, first and foremost is residential. We will have up to four units for individuals with disabilities. They will have, there'll be two, two bedrooms, a three bedroom and a one, so that counts for eight bedrooms. And that does account for affordable housing, as these individuals do not have occupations that are self-supporting. Um, they receive government, uh, assistance. Um, that's about almost sixty percent of the actual square footage of the building. Um, but in addition, it, there is room for a community space, which we're thrilled because it, it allows for integration capabilities for. The residents and also for the community at large. It would be open to other organizations to have meetings. And to develop just great opportunities, um, for our residents. The other part of the building, which is really the left wing, it's seventy-three hundred square feet. It is, um, we will have office space in there. We have, uh, would be tenant already. She is a nonprofit. Um, free period, and she actually supplies sanitary products to underserved communities for their schools and workplaces. And she's very interested in, in taking about, I think it's like a thousand square feet. Where she will have her products and she will distribute them, and actually offers our individuals an opportunity for a job. So that's a really amazing thing. Um, and then the other piece is for South Shore Support. Who hopes to open up a call center. South Shore Support is a nonprofit. Um, we are actually a subsidiary of South Shore Support. South Shore Support services over almost a thousand individuals on the South Shore with intellectual disabilities and autism. And recently, within the past year, they opened up or have facilitated a remote support call center. The call center is actually a nationwide call center, but our hope and desire is to be able to bring it in. And have South Shore Support do that call center. That would allow us to, or the call center can take up to fifty. Clients within the re, in the community that are potentially, they're disabled and they need some support and they wanna live independently. So, um, this building, we're not, the footprint doesn't change. We're just. Doing a renovation of the interior. Um, our builder is Bob Shepherd, and we've just recently gotten plans from him and recently got a cost for him. The entire project, we're looking at probably for eight oh nine as a three million dollar project. So we did go to CPC with an application to support us for a million dollars, and they did unanimously approve it. So they did recommend that we come to the other wards and meet with, um, you and the select board to let you all know what this product is. Um, in hopes that we get your support so that it can move forward to, I'll be in April. So.
Thanks.
So go ahead.
So this is the existing building?
Eight oh nine, empty way.
So what you got laid out on the drawing here, just the layout of the existing building?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's actually, I think, the site plan, like, the site plan. That was the septic, that's also wanna let you know, the septic. We did do, um, it did perk, and we went out, Morris did the engineering plan, and. He came back to us with, um, you know, we can, we could put in a ten-bedroom system, and we put it out for three different bids.
So there's, um. Do you create any kind of a new parking lot?
The parking lot will, where the septic is going, if you were looking, if the building is in a U, and, you know, you're facing that U on the right side. The septic actually will come out and be where that parking area is at this point. It will be a raised system. Um, so it will cut into the parking area a bit. Um. I don't know if the parking is on there. I, the. I know there's a requirement for the parking number of spaces there. I don't know exactly what the total number is based on. We have planned for that. Um, but I do wanna let you know that our individuals don't drive. So, um. I know what, two bedrooms, you have to have one and a half space, and one bedroom, one. Um, but they don't drive, but we will have, um, staff coming in and out to support them. Um, so we can get back to you if you wanna know exactly what the.
No, I just, I mean, you have to take care of this whole process, I was trying to understand. What, what kind of changes there? It doesn't sound like there's much. Does it change the, the density at all, in terms of what's allowed in there? It's four units now? There's something.
It's a, it's a, it's a commercial building right now, so this is partially a change of use, so they're going to have to come in for site plan review.
Right.
And they're going to have to outline all the uses of the building in order to determine what the parking is.
Yeah.
Parking is something, parking is something that you can regulate.
Um, and then, just, 'cause I'm curious, what, what is the, uh, he said the call support center? What, what, what is the support center? So what's the support center doing?
Yeah, so, we, um, well, I think, you know, staffing is a crisis right now for human service, and some agencies are even not thinking of any other people. So the state, uh, about a year and a half ago, put out a, uh, R F R for something called Remote Support and Monitoring. Um, so, the person who chooses to have that service gets a two-way communication tablet. Uh, they can also get something called a Geocom, which they can use in the community. Uh, they could be sensors that would detect fall, receptors that would detect seizure, and all of the, and they also get daily call in based on their personal plan. So some of these people up in the morning and reminded to take medication or whatever those are. Um, right now, so we have about twenty-five people, um, we're actually the largest in the state so far, but, um, we've had a couple of problems, because it's so costly to buy all the equipment to start it up. All of us across the state subcontract with the national call center that does this for a bunch of states. Um, and the service is good, we just did a, got a review of the state, ninety-seven percent, but, uh, that, that part of it is a little weak. They grew a little too fast, I think, they've had some issues answering calls in a timely manner, so we're meeting with them on an ongoing basis, but we do have a, um, grant into E O H H S for a few hundred thousand dollars, and we have support from D B S. We'd like to open our own call center and have everything.
So you're replacing this national service?
We'd keep the exact same service, but instead of subcontracting, we would have our own staff, they'd be local, actually get to know people, so if we get, well, one way or another, I think we'll get it, because we have a few grants out. Um, and that will be housed there. And then the other part of it that's kind of interesting is there is space for a live-in, and, um, the idea is the call center would manage a great deal, because it, it really is pretty good service. But if there was, somebody was anxious or there was an issue, we would have the live-in be the first one on the call tray. So that live-in would not have to be on twenty-four hours a day, and, but that person would need to respond.
You're sort of the emergency response, emergency response.
And if the call center would weed it all out and see what they could manage, it's only, it's a year and a half, we've only gone out twice. Most of the time they can manage, but we would have someone on, on site.
So is the call center, when you're anticipating, how many people would be there?
So at one time, there would be, well, it would start small, so initially we'd probably only have three, um, stations.
And it's like a twenty-four seven.
Yeah, so, but they would leave and the next one would come, so.
Wow, that sounds like great support.
And everybody, um, the state now does assessments for assistive technology. So, um, people are all, we don't do that, but we partner with them. So the, you know, people would have ring doorbells, uh, you know.
Like the light alert things, yeah.
Call sensors, yeah, um, they have medication dispensers, they, um, have stoves that shut off. Uh, we have automatic fire stoppers, so everybody would come with all of that assistive technology, which, this, it's been tremendously.
So and it all kind of home runs to this call center?
What's that?
Does it all come back to this call, it's like an operation center?
Most, most of the, um, A T is just self, um, you know, when you walk away from the stove, the stove shuts off.
Oh, it's, yes, auto ignition.
So most of it's self-managed, yeah.
And so that'll be built into each of these units, and you know, we are working with the builder on all of those things too, so.
The four.
Yes, yeah.
Very cool.
Out of curiosity, what's the, the, would the client help with the call center, would that just be situat residents, or would that be re, more regional?
Would, it'd be more regional, we, we, um, but they, that, that staff person wouldn't be regional. We have call trays for all other people around, but probably serve other situ, it already serves a lot of situat residents. It's really good premise, except to make it a little bit better.
Growing pains.
Yeah, it's better if, like, if they, if we have control versus, again, my son uses it, and it might, someone may call him California, and then it's, it's a different person every time.
Yeah.
So, um, this would be ideal for the clients, yeah.
They're calling every, usually they don't want to speak. Well, I guess the board, I mean, it's, it's a great project, but it does need site plan review. And the board's gonna have to decide what type of building this is. The way they're describing it tonight, it's a mixed-use building.
Can't be a plumbing garage.
Quite a space. I know. Previously I had thought it was a multi-family building, but the way they're describing it tonight, it is a mixed-use building.
Yeah, we would have, I think, and we would have liked to have some, um, you know, other rentals there in the sector, just wouldn't allow it, so.
So when you come in for site plan review, you're going to have to come in as a mixed-use building, and you're going to have to show how the parking is going to work, you know, under, under the parking violation. Are you still planning on coming in under the Dover amendment?
I believe so, yeah.
So, under the Dover amendment, the board can reasonably regulate height, yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, building coverage, while exercising concerns for public health and safety. So that's standard right out of, uh, best general law. So you don't have concern is how many people are in the building, and, and one time including. So it has to do with how big your retail spaces as well as how many bedrooms you have, so.
Well, the warehouse space is, um, mostly, I mean, there're not gonna be a lot of people there all the time.
It's done by, it's a part of space by excellent, right, right, so.
Yeah, so they, they store and hand off now.
So we'll have to know all of that, how big the space is, that, 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 and we read the bylaws very early.
Yeah, I feel that, yeah.
We definitely have to use that, so, so it's not just as, uh, uh, a multi-family announcement, so it's changed, it, it, yeah, it's changed over.
Yeah, the septic wouldn't allow for all the units to be built.
But across your business, for sewer.
I know, there was sewer, I'd be, uh.
Have you discussed this with your neighbors, maybe they, are they American?
Well, we have one of this, been, we have, but, um, they were suggesting maybe getting some advice from you on a more formal.
Yeah.
Meaning the owner owns the, uh, buildings across the street, who we bought from.
Oh, nice.
Um, so those three buildings across the street are owned by the same, um, like.
Right, countryway.
Yeah, that we bought from. Um, we do know the, um, neighbors next door, that two families are in favor, but we haven't done any. We, we'd do whatever you advise in terms of a formal meeting with neighbors.
Well, we have a very complicated, correct? Well, under site plan review, about, about a lot of jackals are down there.
It's always good to try, you know, pop people out of, maybe friends in the north have a, have a, a plan, works, and that's.
Yeah, we'll stay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll start with someone, so.
But we'll be able to run it before they think that.
Where, where on Countryway is it, I'm sorry.
So if you know, if we're rebuilding, you should approach it, like, what a kind of, like, you're on a lucky inside, right before it's, I think.
It used to be, they'd drag, uh, it's, it's, uh, like, manufacturing on August, but, uh, it already has a full building generator, which is great.
Oh, that's nice.
The infrastructure of the, of the building, existing building is really great. Well, I know who designed it.
Yeah.
And she's a very modest architect, yes, so, um, I could want to think that if we went for administrative site plan review, is that what you think, Karen?
Yeah, it's a changer, it's a change.
Yes, I understand, I understand, so when could this happen?
I don't know, pardon me, that's a, that's a.
Well, I asked Greg, Ian, um, Brent Morris, this is at the site, and he, he's open. So he apologized that he'll be here tonight and a lot of our previous, uh, um, meeting, but he absolutely will meet with the board, and I, you know. I think what we need.
But you gotta get your, the funding and all that in, in order for, moving forward, right?
Well, the, um, our application to C P C was for a million dollars, so that is a good chunk of it. Um, again, the total capital project is three. Um, we have a meeting with Mass Development in January to talk about the build-out of the.
They're actually gonna, so down the street, we actually opened a, um, smart respite apartment that is filled with all the assistive technology and remote support, so people can go stay for a weekend and staff are there. Uh, onsite, and then they leave for a little while, and people can just be alone, or with a friend and do it remotely, so. Mass Development is gonna meet us there on the night, uh, three or four of their members, because we'll be applying for the, uh, they've allowed us, they've authorized us to apply for the underutilized building program that comes out in January, so they're gonna come out and work with us and tell us, you know, how to do the application, but because that building is changing use, they're allowing it as, as the underutilized building.
So is all your funding coming from those two sources basically?
Well, we're putting in a hot application too, um, to eight eleven, not with the, um, I know, it's, um, I was on the train the whole day, but we're, we're not able to do the, um, you know, the project-based kind of units. We're just going construction money that has to come through a housing authority, you know, we'd love to.
And how, how is it supported sort of in operation? I mean, do, do the residents pay rent and stuff like that?
Yes, 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 and D B S has, um, one approved, whoever's gonna come in to be on their remote support contract. And they're gonna dedicate some staff hours, not twenty-four seven, it's not like a group home. But each person will get some dedicated staff hours, I, I worked for D B S for twenty-five years, so we've been talking a lot about it, we, I brought the deputy commissioner through and they have a favor, so. The actual support for the individuals will get through D B S, and then they'll pay rent and.
They get, do they get supplemental?
They get rents and that kind of stuff, yeah.
That was gonna be my question, is if the rent was the type that can be supported by S S I.
Yes, it's seventy-five percent of your income.
And then the other piece of it is those, um, residents, if there's additional support needed, that's over and above, it's like an H O A type of thing, there'll be an additional fee, but, you know, any applicant and their guardians would know about. And there's also, um, rents will come, obviously, from the two people that are renting from us.
Right.
So, um, and also they're all subsidized housing wait lists, which are starting to pop up through, you know, the housing wait.
This is the beginning of the expansion all over the South Shore.
That's the plan, that's the plan. Once we, you know.
This is the first of this type, right, you told us, you said it as a truth, it's assuming the very worst project here.
Yeah, this is not D B S funded, these are not group homes, these are, this is our initiative. And the goal really is for situat to become a model, so that other communities can replicate it. Because there's such, I mean.
And it's, I think it's a great practice. Yes, and I personally think where, where it's, where it's going with people living at home, getting, getting assistive technology like that as they age.
Oh, so much, yeah, I already told my kids, sign me up, that's what I want.
We also have a meeting with Senator O'Connor about it as well, um, so he's aware of it, he's obviously very supportive of it, and he is going to try to do whatever he can for the twenty twenty-five budget. Um, and, you know, I think he's trying to get a meet for us with the house base needs, so that we can make our pitch, but the thing is, there's two very, um, local nonprofits that will be in this facility that are trying to do good work.
I think then what we need is to somehow have them apply the application for it. So that's on you, to help go with the site plan.
The other thing that you have to consider is, uh, and I know you've heard this, um, is you're gonna have to look at the stone wall out there, and you're gonna have to look at site distances to see if you can get in and out safely. Um, 'cause I know that the eight seventeen people have approached you about site distance, and the wall, and, and the wall impacts their site distance, and I don't know how it impacts your site distance as well. It, it's, it could be, I'm just saying, we have to operate, we have to be able to review for health, safety, and welfare. And I'm sure you want the vehicles going in and out of there to be safe, those, that's an issue. I know that you said the people don't drive, do the people, will the people be walking to the train station, et cetera? Uh, the residents don't drive, but the workers will.
Yeah, like people working.
People are working. I'm, I'm just gonna throw this issue out now, because we have to, the Plennywood has not decided how they're going to be addressing the issue, but in front of that, in front of the property, there is a sidewalk. That sidewalk is not at all to town standards, there is no separation, it's flush with the road. There's no vertical granite curb to make, to make it safe, um, you know. It may be some type of group effort along that road to make that sidewalk to state standards. Throwing that.
Okay.
But I'm gonna evaluate it too. We, we're more than willing to.
Well, you know, as we will, when, when we do have a meeting with Mass Development, we will definitely broach that with them, where they've, they've agreed to walk through the building with us, take a look, and give us any of their ideas. I, I, I've never really done mass development before, I haven't gone through the, uh, one stop, but, um, they did say they'd hold our hands to do it, but they also, they do have some programs for, um, you know, those type of modifications, so we can certainly, you know, address that, um.
So I think that if you get your application part, you know, get your application together, we're willing to, I mean, I can meet with you and, you know, we can have an informal meeting again, prior to you submitting it fully. I think that would probably be your.
We will take all the help, what you can add.
The middle is like a community mall, as often as you need, so that we won't spend a year at nine o'clock at the. So we'll be.
No, we'll be.
That's right. I was gonna say, I'm glad, if you guys want to grant it.
I know, when John will be applying for. Yeah, to be elected, yes.
Right, and that's why we get basically.
Okay, okay.
So is it, so we, uh, apply for that, we, maybe first type of site plan, and then anything else that you can suggest that we'll need to do, or?
Well, I think they have it right, if you're meeting with, like, Mass Development, and they've shown everything you need, they're up with.
Right.
Give the maximum we can have.
Yeah.
There, I have to say, it is nice.
Can you bring our application, then you'll be able to help, who would like to, so we'll all be.
We do have, you know, grants out as well, Bradley Foundation asked us for a packet, and they're having their trustees review it at the next meeting, so we're actually, you know, we're going for some traditional grants, and we've done pretty well over the last year or two getting grants after this project, but, um, so we'll be, we'll be looking at all those sources as well.
Well, good luck.
Alright.
And when, yeah, when you're all set to convey, they're obviously, maybe, they're a little, okay, draft decided, so.
Okay.
It's a bad word, but project, that, okay, that, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's a covenant.
Thanks for coming. Now Mr. Madella's here.
Done forty-five. We meant to say A M. Way past my deadline.
So, I, I went out for a site visit with, uh, consulting engineer this week. Uh, the project at fourteen sixty, oh, Countryway is winding down. Uh, we have an actual that's getting work done on it. Um, ninety-nine percent of the site work is done. Um, they will be asking, coming in and asking for, um, certificates of occupancy in the next few weeks. They'll, they'll have to give us, you know, master deed and all that kind of documents. But to that end, I think uh sure reduction is is in order for the project. They have left to do some striping, we're with a dumpster, um, you know, some other minor things. Uh, and so I think that, you know, we've got a bond right now that they knew is tomorrow. And so if if you agree to take five thousand cash surety, then they don't have to renew the bond.
Like, you know, like what is going to be this?
Yeah, so.
So landscaping is done.
Yeah, it's all, it's, we have um, there's a dumpster, our construction dumpster is sitting on top of the three parking lines we have to strip. So we're not ready to go to the dumpster because it's half empty and it's a thousand bucks a piece. So we're just, the guys are just finishing up in the in the vacuum and doing some uh baseboard. So before the end of the year, we're gonna get rid of the dumpster and then uh we'll just put most three, three stripes. So and and then uh in the spring, we're gonna oversee, we planted the grass came up, but so it's, it's just, yeah, we've had it.
And my city's a nice project.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
So is the one at the border of McDonald's, yeah.
Um.
I heard.
Happy five thousand.
I I think five thousand seems very reasonable, Janet Fernando thought five thousand was reasonable. It, you know, we're we're just, we're trying to, we're trying to help people and we're, you know.
Alright, shall I?
Yeah.
Go.
I move the, that the bond of one hundred ninety-one thousand fifteen dollars for fourteen sixteen Old Country Way, the site plan administrative review and special permit for tandem parking be reduced to five thousand cash surety. The remaining work to be completed, the reduction in bond is based on site visit with town consulting engineer Janet Fernando of the Horstley Group.
Just the, just a quick question, is, are are we eliminating bond and putting up a different surety? So we're not, we're just eliminating, reducing.
We're eliminating the bond, right? Oh, we have second.
We're trying, yeah, it's as good as cash.
So I I would just slightly modify that language, say we're eliminating bond, right? Not reducing it.
Um, reducing the surety to eliminate the bond because the bond is.
Yeah.
They'd still, this would still be a.
It's not just eliminating bond, but it's a reduction in surety and elimination of bond.
Right. I I didn't. Say second amended, yeah, second amended. Ah.
I.
Right.
Turn it up this night. These things are hundreds, you know, that's.
Little thunderfishes.
Alright, thanks, I'll see you this week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
So all your armpit should be high, put it on tight, okay, so we'll update our MVP.
Um, no, 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 we have um. Yes, the oak. Seven.
We have uh, in the in the kindness of my heart today, because it's the holiday season, I decided to remind seven Mcgallum uh seven McDonald Terrace thirty-three and Driftway that they have to be endorsed within ninety days. And they may not, that the timing isn't gonna work out, so they're just asking for an extension.
Alright.
I'm.
To the end of January, but you see, the ninety days expires January ninth, leaves January eleventh, so.
Are you ready?
Okay.
Yeah.
We're gonna be safe.
I'm who took up the applicant's request to continue the counter endorsement of site plan administrative review and special permit for mixed-use building and multi-family building and strong water permit in the Village Center and Niggamut District, Greenwich Gateway District, Greenwich Village Central Sub District, Gateway Business District, B C and G D G G B C and G W B at thirty-three Driftway slash seven McDonald Terrace until January thirty thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, which is beyond the ninety days after the period ended.
Second.
One favor.
I, that's that.
Okay.
Now you can go on.
Now I can get old business, new business, et cetera, et cetera, so we have to see.
Uh, town council's still reviewing our um information, so um he's gonna let me know by tomorrow. Um, we hope to, so after he reviews everything, we hope to file for the mandatory mixed-use districts next week, a lot of them pre-approved. We hope to get all that filed next week before business.
Good job.
That's great, that's what we. Short out, yeah.
Land somewhere, nobody will look at it.
We have to file by January eighth.
Yeah.
To, so we wanna get it done next week.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting minutes from December seventh through twenty-three, so.
One favor.
I uh.
Spending money.
I move to approve the requisition of six hundred fifty-five dollars for both the wooden roof, period of services for eighteen replaced for one thousand three hundred, one thousand three thirteen hundred, one thousand. Did I type it?
Yes, you did.
One thousand three hundred fifty.
Seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, seventy-five. Yeah, you've got two zeros in here. Alright. For Horstley Wooden Roof.
One hundred three seventy-five.
Yeah, peer review services for Seaside, Sitchu, for one hundred ninety dollars sixty cents to Gatehouse Media, legal ad for nineteen Power Heights Road and fifty dollars and thirty-three cents WB Mason's office.
Second. I would favor.
I.
Okay, what's next? Uh, I, I said I have not watched any videos of these, have you gotten?
I did.
You did?
I went to a bike community meeting, uh, and I think some there's since the last one. They're busy, they're busy.
Okay, I went to CPC, million dollars unanimously was approved, money was approved for uh the Ellis House, twenty twenty-two thousand dollars, this all goes to town meeting.
Yeah.
And then the two million for the five new tennis courts at the high school.
Hey, sir, may I ask your question, your million dollar continues to continue on town meeting?
Yeah, all of this continued on town meeting, all of it. And the pickleball courts have then sort of for now withdrawn, because we want the um the five new courts done at the high school first.
She's so sad because they just.
What?
Five new courts.
The the test courts at the high school.
No, they did not, no, 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 no.
They only four courts up there, didn't they?
No, no, I'm not, they're not with five new ones, they're not, they're not adding one more. Yes, they are.
Yeah, there's four there now, you gotta have five.
They're gonna only add one more, yes, and I'll bring those up.
Yes, but they have. But they have to be.
They're all gonzo and all new ones.
They all have to use me.
What? I'm saying they, aren't those done when they did the rest of the?
No.
No, all those have already been there or?
Oh. There's always.
I'm gonna move on.
Yeah, you need to fit a little bit of money in.
No, I have a good show, right.
So I know that was not included, I have a lot.
It was, it was not included, but it was taken out.
No, the turf, it wasn't part of the turf.
Wasn't part of the Big Ten when you were in the region, because it was sort of above and beyond and they were told that we, that they would come back for the tennis courts. And so that's what they're doing, but we have some of them that really is desperate for pedal off courts.
Well, we know, we have a nice state of the world, like pedal off.
It's a giant.
I know. Okay, okay, I'll put you in the building for a case. But we, we're gonna be busy for a long time.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's just the short of it. Let's take motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.